To opening comments, starting with our board members. I know Supervisor Benoit has a number of items to discuss, but the first one is relative to pensions. I'm going to ask him to make the introduction for Barbara Oliver. Supervisor Benoit?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to ask Barbara Oliver to step forward. We had rather interesting, on many levels, of ending days of the legislative session. One of them was a proposal by Governor Brown to make a major reform in pensions. And as has been the case over the years, most of what we've done in pensions has flowed from the state and counties and cities emulating, sometimes by competitive reasons why they can't not. And many were waiting for the state to take action on retirements. We didn't wait. We moved earlier, quicker, and I think the many critics of what came out of the legislature brought out that that was the right thing to do. But I asked if Ms. Oliver could give us a kind of a side-by-side comparison and give us some thoughts on where we are and what the legislation actually did or did not accomplish.
Thank you, Supervisor. Barbara Oliver from Human Resources Department. There's been a lot of very quick review of the new law, that AB 340 is the number, and it provides for some major changes in pension for our employees and for employees across the state. The important thing to remember is that for most of the pension reform, it applies to new employees only. So I will be pointing out things that are applicable to current employees as well. So, the county's reform went into effect on August 23rd and is immediately impacting any new employees. AB 340 will be in effect as of January 1st, 2013. And interestingly, it's actually going to present us with a third tier for our employees, with slight changes from what we've already approved. So if you look first at the miscellaneous benefit, sorry, I can't get this fully into The county passed the 2% at age 60 benefit for new employees in the miscellaneous plan instead of 3% at 60. Under the governor's plan, that will now change to 2% at age 62, basically adding two years before people hit the normal retirement age. So it also means that their employees cannot retire from that plan until age 52, instead of age 50 being the earliest retirement age.
62, you mean?
62 is the normal retirement age. They receive the full benefit. But you can retire up to 10 years earlier, as we could under the prior plans. So that means nobody would be able to retire until age 52 under the new plan. The pension compensation maximum is the biggest change to the benefit. It implements a maximum cap on salary of $110,100 for 2012. What it is, is whatever the Social Security cap is. So it's expected that that number will go up every year with the cost of living, as it has in the past. So we don't know what 2013 is yet, but it will be higher than the $110,000. And it also imply, puts into effect the three-year average salary, which we already did with Tier Two. So the major change is really the, what we're calling pension compensation, and then a two-year addition to what normal retirement is.
Pardon me, Ms. Oliver. Once again, clarify for me, the cap that the governor has in the legislature passed will apply to people who are hired after January 1 of 2013, but not to people retiring between now and 30 years from now when they retire?
No, it will apply to new employees hired after January 1, 2013.
Right.
So it does not apply at all to current employees, and it will not apply to those hired between August and December. They will have the lower pension benefit, but not the cap.
So we will actually start to see the benefit of that cap is 25 to 30 years from now?
20 years from now, I would say, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
It takes a while. The safety benefit also had similar changes. Our safety employees, as you know, do not have Social Security. So, again, the governor put into effect a plan that's called 2.7% at age 57. It basically adds two years to what the county already agreed to. The 2% at age 50 provides a maximum 2.7% at 55. The governor's plan will provide us with 2.7 at age 57, and again, leaving for safety the minimum retirement age at age 50. It was not increased as it was for miscellaneous employees. Also implied, implemented the 36-month average, but for pension compensation, they recognize a slightly higher cap because they do not have Social Security. And the cap this year would have been $132,120, basically 20% over whatever the Social Security cap is each year. So again, each year that number goes up. In terms of employee contributions, this is an area that has created a lot of controversy, but it, when you approved our pension reform, we eliminated our employer-paid member contributions for all new employees, and we implemented a three-year gradual implementation for those who are current employees. The result of that is that our employees are now paying 8% for those who have 3% at age 60, 7% for those who have the 2% formula that started in August, and 9% for any safety member, regardless of which pension benefit they have. What the governor has approved is that we can pay, we can charge our employees up to 50% of the normal cost, and I'll explain that in a minute, or the current rate, whichever one is greater. Now, the result of that, normal cost, is the amount of, amount that it would cost to provide the current year's benefit. So you get 3% of your salary for each year of service. As we get to one year of service for each employee, they calculate what the cost of that one year added to their pension is. That's what normal cost is. Now, the other part of employer contribution, in employee contribution, is the past service liability. And this is where a lot of people actually got into trouble. The past service liability continues to increase each year as your salary goes up, because your salary is based on the final salary. There's a little piece of past service liability that's added each year for each new, for each employee, on top of the amounts that had not been paid previously for various reasons. So when we approved the 3% at 60, for example, and we approved it retroactively for all service, the past service liability jumped because we had to count that extra 1% of salary for all those past years of service. So all of a sudden, our past service liability went up greatly. And this is where a lot of employers got into real trouble. Because we were relatively well-funded, it didn't hit us as hard as some people. So the important thing about the employee contribution change is that it does not have the employee sharing the past service liability, only the current year of liability. Okay? So for us, I'm sorry.
Ms. Oliver, can I clarify one other part that I think is critically important on the EPMC? The governor's proposal, once again, is for new hires. And had we relied on that, we would have not received any benefit from an EPMC change until...
Until 2018.
Right.
The amounts, the items that are in yellow on your form are the things that affect current employees. So there is a provision that after 2018, we can impose 50% of normal cost on current employees as well as the new employees. And again, for us, our normal cost for miscellaneous employees is below the current 8% contribution level for employees. So it will not affect us for at least the next four years. For safety, our normal cost is 18.03% this year. So if that provision went into effect this year, it would mean that we could add a whopping .015% charge to our safety employees. In effect, it will not happen until 2018. And so at that point in time, our normal cost will be recalculated. I cannot predict what it is because it'll be based on what the interest rates are at that time, which we do expect to have an impact, increasing our normal cost. So in 2018, it's likely we will have some ability to increase the employees' rate, and not only ability, but obligation to negotiate that with current employees. We do not, are not required to negotiate it with new employees. That part of it is in effect with the governor's law. There are other minor provisions that the law also addressed. One of them is what's called airtime. That's the ability of an employee to buy up to five years of pension service by paying both the employee and employer cost for that benefit. So some of our employees have taken advantage of that. That provision will be available for current employees up until December 31st of this year. After that, no one will be able to apply for airtime. The pension contribution holiday doesn't really affect us because your board policy has already stated that we're always going to pay at least the normal cost. And the governor actually says that we will be required to pay the normal cost unless the plan is at least 120% funded, overfunded. Reciprocity for electeds is another change that was made. It, again, does not affect our county because we were a Cal-Purs county. It only affects the 1937 Act counties. Basically saying that if you're an elected official, you can't get your elected official pension based on a salary that you earned as a non-elected official. It has to be based on your elected salary. The post-retirement employment is going to affect some of our retirees. As you know, we have a 60-day waiting period before a retiree can come back to work for limited time. Now, as of January, it will be 180 days that employee, retirees will not be able to return to work for even a partial job until, unless, and he did give you this little hole, unless the board in public session votes to allow an employee, a retiree, to come back early because of a desperate need. So there is a flexibility that's left to your board in terms of a need. And then finally, there's a change in the industrial disability benefit for safety employees. Safety employees currently receive either 50% of their final pay or their pension that they would have received if they had retired on that day. There's now a third option that produces an actuarially reduced pension for those who are disabled under age 52. So it will affect, it will help people who are, under age 50, I'm sorry. It will help people who are disabled but have served a significant number of years prior to their disability. They'll get more than 50% of their salary in some circumstances. So again, it's a response to long-term safety employees who are injured on the job. It's a little slightly better benefit that will be available. Those are the major changes to the pension reform, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, thank you, Barbara. Supervisor Bester.
Supervisor Benoit, I appreciate you bringing this forward. Ms. Olivier, your explanation's always pretty clear of the most complex subjects that even sometimes leave me, leave me scratching my head. But it looks like the changes our county made are generally congruent with what the state has done so far, except the state did not really push hard to get current, their current employees statewide paying into their pensions. They've kind of left that to another day, I guess. There's a lot of talk about it, but it hasn't happened.
Correct.
So I hope the state was emboldened as far as they took this issue, and not only, I mean, they were not only concerned about looking like they were taking fiscal reform seriously at the state level so that they could get Proposition 30 passed by the governor, but I hope they were also given a push to do this because counties like Riverside went ahead and proactively addressed this topic with great detail and with a lot of fortitude as well. And you and your staff went through, what, hundreds if not thousands of hours of negotiation as you attempted to put particularly the negotiations with the changes for current employees into place and past hires. This would not have happened either at the county level had we not had a favorable outcome on Measure N surpassing Measure L at the ballot two years ago. All our efforts would have been scotched and would have been retarded for years, if not decades. So there was a combination of things that this county did and did well, and your staff, and in fact, I think the unions and their representatives finally recognized that something had to be done as well. So they deserve our thanks as well for coming to the table and bargaining faithfully. We did not act like the state of Wisconsin. We bargained this out seriously and in great detail with all our five units, and indeed, heard from a lot of our non-represented managerial employees. So it sort of puts, puts the confirmation, what the state has done so far, really is a, is a oblique but very, very important compliment to this county of Riverside, that we were doing the right things and we were, we were taking them on early.
Correct. And as you well know, the board's leadership certainly provided that kind of impetus to let it happen. But more than anything, this has really been a process of people recognizing the real seriousness of this problem and being able to say, no, we have to address it. And your board certainly took the leadership in that.
Just, what's the third, the third tier that you're referring to?
Well, our second tier are for people that are employed between August 23rd and January 1st. Those people will get the lower pension benefit that your board approved, but will not have the Social Security cap or the two-year extension of normal retirement. So the third year includes those two options, or two items.
Supervisor Ashley.
Thank you. I think Supervisor Bester's comments were right on, but this, the action passed by the state is, it's beginning, just like in the beginning of the beginning, it's really sort of anemic, but it's better than nothing, and it is, and is helpful going forward to many counties. Our plan, the reform that we did is far more robust and longer-lasting, and we did, you know, we did it through the bargaining, followed the laws above board, bargaining hard with our units, back and forth, give and take, and we have a far better plan that's going to really make it a lot easier for us to hit our budget. We're talking about our budgets today. Our budgets are going to be difficult in the next few years, but as we go on down the road, they're going to get a lot easier because of the reform we took. Because these reforms, like, are going to build like a snowball, starts out small and it gets bigger and bigger. And we're going to have the benefits, future boards are going to benefit from that. And the county's going to have more and more money available for public safety and their services because of the actions taken by our board. And I'm really concerned about the one at the state, even though it was, it's a good start, it's not part of the Constitution. And when, you know, next year, what, two hours to go, somebody decided we're going to change this, and they can just wipe it away. So for ours, I think it is going to go on regardless. And the only way ours can be changed is through the bargaining table, and that's going to be difficult to do. So I think I want to compliment Governor Brown and the legislature for doing something, but you know, they still have a lot to do.
All right, thank you, Supervisor.
One final comment.
Yes, Supervisor Benoit?
The employee contribution segment of our negotiated agreements, as I recall, the number for savings in the first five years was in the range of $650 million.
Right.
And had we waited for the governor and the action that we see now came out, we still would not have achieved those savings because they weren't, they did not deal with existing employees.
Correct.
If nothing else, the fact that we took the effort and through negotiations arrived at that, which clearly our side was, we need to save jobs, and the more of this we get, the fewer layoffs we'll have. The bargaining units were looking at what's going to happen in Sacramento and worried that it might be worse than even what happened. But we reached an agreement that taxpayers of Riverside County are going to be $650 million better off in five years than had we waited for the state of California to act.
That's correct, because five years from now is when the governor's...
Will kick in.
...proposal kicks in, right.
Very good. Thank you very much for all your efforts and your staffs. Thank you, Barbara.
Supervisor Benoit, do you have some more?
I have a couple of items. My colleagues will indulge me, just, they are significant, I believe. On Thursday, August 30th, I responded to the city of Cathedral City where they'd had severe flooding. About four or five blocks of Highway 111 had six inches of mud in it, many buildings with mud in them, water. This was a tropical storm that decided to drop right above the area where we had been planning and are planning to build a dam to control the flow out of the mountains. I want to thank Dusty Williams and Steve Thomas for their response. I toured the damage on August 30th with the mayor and the council member from Cathedral City. And the following Tuesday, I had Dusty Williams and the mayor and Steve and the council member and others in our staffs in my office talking about what remains to be done to get this project underway, and it is well underway, and we made sure that all the Ts have been crossed and Is dotted. But we hope to have that facility under construction by March and complete within a year or so. Hopefully by the time the next flooding event there, it seems about, you know, about a five-year cycle in that area, this will be in place. On Thursday, August, the, I'm sorry, September 4th, had the chance to tour Mojave Gold. It's Don Krasarian's enterprise down in our South Coachella Valley. I just want to proudly show you Mojave Gold. And these things are nearly gold. These are raisins specifically grown and processed in our desert, picked in a particular amount of moisture, and considered a delicacy in Japan. And our Economic Development Group and our Foreign Trade Office have worked hard to help make this factory that I toured a reality. $12 American dollars for each one of these little guys in Japan. They're being marketed right now, and they're making millions of dollars and many, many jobs. There were, I think, 20 ladies on the line processing these in this brand-new factory as we toured it last week down in the South Coachella Valley. And continuing on the theme of foreign trade, and our Foreign Trade Office is getting great praise from many different sources, but this weekend, at the, at the request of the Office of Foreign Trade, I went to Toronto to join Lee Fraser, who is the head of the Canadian California Business Alliance. And they were putting on a booth there, talking about the film industry, but talking in general about the ability to create better paths of communications and more opportunities for trade between Riverside County and Canada. I had a great opportunity to meet with a number of people there, including the city council member, Michael Thompson, who arranged for, and I was allowed to speak briefly at the city council meeting. By the way, they have 2.6 people in the city of Toronto and 43 council members. You talk about a busy meeting.
Six million?
2.6 million and 43 council members. I told them we'd get by somehow, slightly different ratio in Riverside County. But with $35 billion of trade between Canada and California every year, $5 billion of that is out of Riverside County. And where you have that kind of success, there's opportunity for more. And so I believe we opened some doors. The mayor expressed an interest in coming to visit Riverside County soon, and had many other meetings with people in the entertainment industry particularly, but in many businesses there. And finally, I'd like to just report on a meeting I had in Sacramento the preceding Thursday, the California State Association of Counties, and our effort there to support our four cities and the VLF changes that were made in the, not this last budget, but the year before, that were a horrible oversight and resulted in cutting the knees out from underneath four of our cities, who had acted, and their citizens, who had acted under the law as it stood at the time, that dictated that a portion of the VLF collected statewide could be shared by brand-new cities for the first few years so that they get their feet under the ground. This is, this was agreed upon by cities all over the state, that they would give up a small share of their VLF to help new cities incorporate. Unfortunately, again, I believe by oversight and a change to accommodate budgetary priorities in Sacramento, that money was shifted to be a county fund for our realignment. And other monies were substituted for these cities, but left out these four cities. I'm sorry to report, colleagues, that the effort on the part of Riverside County to support a bill that is going to the governor did not receive approval at the state level or at the Urban Caucus level, where I represent both of those organizations for this board. It was basically an argument that this may, in the future, take money away from the pot available for realignment. And as Riverside County, being the only county with the cities directly impacted, I think we had a strong voice and we made some impact, but there were 57 other counties that looked at it from a different perspective. And we're not willing to, on behalf of these four cities, say to the governor, don't, or sign this bill and allow this to go forward. There is a commitment from CSAC to work with us. If the governor doesn't sign the bill that's on his desk, that one fixes these four cities, but two, leaves the door open for new incorporations and new annexations to continue to take a little bit more out of that pot, even though it's a very small number of the counties, and we're not willing to help us with that bill. So we hope the governor signs the bill. We think it's incredibly important, very fair. We will be expressing those thoughts to the governor's office, and I just want to let you know that that's, that we made the, we did the good fight there, but we didn't prevail. And that's my last item. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Benoit. I just want to add to Supervisor's comments about CSAC. I heard, I could not attend the meeting last Thursday, but I heard that you did a tremendous job, Supervisor Benoit, in trying to sell Riverside County's case. Supervisor Benoit and I had the opportunity to talk to the current officers of CSAC the day before on a conference call in an attempt to sell Riverside County's, or express Riverside County's concern and hopefully achieve their support the following day. Supervisor Benoit indicated it's not as much the four cities that they're concerned about that are here in Riverside County, because that, they know how hard we worked. It's ongoing, the bill didn't cover, the bill didn't cover new cities, excuse me, it also includes VLF or any new cities subsequent to our four cities. And that is where the heartache comes from with CSAC, because they look at the, any additional eroding of the VLF would only cut into AB 109 funding. The governor's office has assured me that they will give us and here, both myself and Sheriff Sniff, when that time comes. Hopefully, we want it to happen before the bill is either signed or vetoed, to have that opportunity to sell Riverside County's case. But I just wanted to say, Supervisor Benoit, you did a... But I, I just wanted to say Supervisor Brinoy, you did a tremendous job. I heard nothing but praise for your presentation. Even though they went against you, that's just the way it happens unfortunately with, when you're dealing with 58 county members. Supervisor Ashley, did you have additional comments?
Yes, I'd like to comment on this as well. I want to thank Supervisor Brinoy and you Supervisor Davaloni for your, your hard work there. And John, you did a fantastic job trying to convince the counties of this. But the important thing is the counties are not making the decision. The legislature did. It's up in front of the governor. And I want to thank all our representatives for their efforts. All our lobbyists who did a good job of getting this, the word is, this hope the governor signs it and it'll help our cities. And if it helps those cities, it helps the county, because those cities get in trouble, gets sued. And there's only one around that can help them. It's the counties and it's going to, could erode our funds. So good work, good work there. Let's hope we can finish it off. Another thing, I'll just talk about the storms a little bit. We've had a series of storms, you know, they hit around, they hit the Nuevo area, Good Hope, Paris area in the last few weeks, and it knocked the power off for some time. And the Nuevo knocked out a line of power poles over a half mile long. They all went down. And I want to commend the Southern California Edison Company. They got on the job and they got those poles back up and that power back on unbelievably fast considering the circumstances. And also our fire department and our sheriff's department are right out there doing their job, alerting people. It was a good effort by all. We had another terrible tropical storm hit the eastern part of Reno Valley. And we had mudslides in the homes and all that. And it so happened, that's where our office is. And right in the middle of where that hit, they knocked the power out in the hospital, had to turn the generators on. And again, Edison Company rallied, got the power back on over Reno Valley fairly fast, within hours. And then the Robin Hastings, my chief of staff, was there that happened, and she was calling as she saw the storm coming and getting resources coming to that area. And she did a great job of helping orchestrate the recovery and relief efforts out in the eastern part of the valley, and I want to commend her for that. The other comment thing that I'd like to comment on, I think Supervisor Brinoy would like to chime in again, he had so many items. He was reluctant to, to continue on, but I think you should talk about this one too. And that's the odor from the Salt and Sea that's, that's now had been enjoyed by all of Southern, most of Southern California rather than just the, the Coachella Valley. This happens almost every year, and as the Salt and Sea is, is dying and it just, it'll all get used to it, because with the, it seemed like the climatic changes we're having, you're going to have these storms, you could have these storms every summer, you could, maybe once a year, you could enjoy that. So this, the Salt and Sea, saving the Salt and Sea and restoring it to viability is doable. But it's, it's not, it's not on the state's burner. They just seem to be pushing it off. And we're, we have the Salt and Sea Authority that the county's represented on by Supervisor Brinoy, not that I. We've been, I think, have been carrying on very well trying to, you know, keep this issue alive and solve this problem. But they, the state says, no, we don't, they basically are just shutting, they're turning their backs on us up to now. And they don't, they don't want us to, I guess they want to control the thing, but they don't have any money and they want us to use their resources. I don't know what we're going to do. Assemblyman Perez did a, had a great bill that would have started us in the right direction. And we have to try again next year. Supervisor, do you like to comment on it?
Yeah, I appreciate you reminding me. That's the odor that many of you have smelled for the first time. We smell occasionally in the desert a lot of times. It was probably stronger the last 10 days than I remember for quite a while. And then I believe it was Saturday night's, or perhaps it was Sunday night's wind event that over here. Carried it further than it's ever been noted in the Reno Valley and as far away as Simi Valley, I'm told. And it is a very, very, some would say intractable problem with the, with the Salt and Sea. And we continue to work very hard and the Assemblyman's bill did fail. We need to, and I've already talked to his staff and the Assemblyman, we're going to continue that effort because we, we need to fix this thing. And this is just a sign of the kind of serious problems we face in our Palm Springs area. But people quite a ways away learned about it for the first time because of this unusual weather event. So we'll continue to focus on that. I would also just like to add, I don't want to forget that this morning, there is a couple places on Highway 111 with two feet of water on it down near the Salt and Sea in the Mecca area where we've got a serious problem with flooding also. So we're not out of the woods on this yet.
The storms are still out there.
Yep. It's very interesting weather pattern.
All right. Thank you. Great comments. Any further comments, members of the board? All right. Mr. Bore.
We'll be happy to present the budget today. It's ready. This board meeting probably marks the end of the summer activities. It was a very busy summer. The county department heads have been working on three initiatives that we've begun at the, at my level and the department head level. Working on the economic health of the county. We are working on the public health of the county and livable communities, and that's resonating with many folks throughout the county. We're also working very hard on cost control, and we'll talk about that at the budget. I've been very, been very busy on this August break. We have had meetings. I've met with three college presidents, the UCR chancellor, various city managers throughout the county, my counterpart in San Bernardino. And as we talk about regional issues, these regional issues of economic health, livable communities and cost saving are really at the forefront. And I think we'll find a lot of partnership throughout this region.
Good work. I was happy to see that the Ontario Airport Authority has included mere leverage on that committee. That's a good start. That's a good start. Going in the right direction. We know Ron is going to have a lot on his, a lot of time on his hands coming into January. And so he'll, he'll be a good representative of the region until we get a, an addition of a board meeting eventually, a board member. All right. There are no, there is no state budget update. So with that, I'm going to go into any corrections, additions or deletions to the agenda?
Good morning. Additions, items 3.61 through 3.65. Deletions, 3.55 and 3.56. Corrections, continue, item 2.5 to October 16th, 2012. Endotations.
Okay. Okay, move. A motion and a second with those amendments, and that would include the admin action calendar and consent calendar, Supervisor Ashley?
Yes.
And seconded by Supervisor Brinoy. Please vote. Motion is unanimous. Supervisor Stone is somewhere. Just don't know where. We hear he's traveling.
Wherever he is, he's on vacation.
He's not telling us. So we're not saying either, even if we knew. Okay. Items, we have items that have been pulled from the agenda. Item 3.1.
Item 3.42. These are from public speakers. Item 3.59 and 3.60 and 3.64. Any others by members of the board? Yes. Any others?
That's it? All right. I'll call for a motion on the balance, please.
Mr. Chairman.
And a motion and a second. Did you have one?
Mr. Chairman, there's actually a few other items that have speakers.
Okay. Let me go through this one more time. 3.1. Oh, you're right. 3.14 would be excluded from that motion. Yeah, 3.11. And 3.64. The 3.59 in the budget?
Yeah.
3.64, correct. I just said 3.64 is included in the items to be pulled. Okay. So those additional items included in the motion by the banker and the second, I'll call for the question. Please vote. Supervisor Best. And motion is unanimous, 4-0 again. We'll have a unanimous vote with one absent today. All right. That takes us, oh, before I go, I failed to mention the individuals who put together the great video this morning. I gave Tom Freeman all the credit, and he made sure to remind me that he just gave the direction and the request. I want to thank Nathan Holtgren, Debbie Moore and Veronica Casper from our Economic Development Agency. Always do a great job. I appreciate it. Okey-dokey, ladies and gentlemen. Item 3.1, first item with a public speaker, and that is. Britt Holstrom. Britt will be followed by Gary Grant. Start at 3.14. But before we go 3.14, after Britt, we're going to have Supervisor Ashley on 3.11. Mine will be quick.
Pardon me if I look shocked. It's due to Mr. Ashley's giving me a copy of Riverside Hospice communication with him, which is all false. But I'll sort of calm down right now and deal with this. Last time we had a meeting here, Mr. Tadalone, out of the goodness of his heart, I'm sure, had given out of the funds that I am, at the end of the year are given to each supervisor to describe, to gift, almost like Christmas in June, to people in the various communities. And I'm all for that. The only thing that objected at the time, but I was working on something else, I didn't speak, but I would do it now. Because the topic now is also that another gift is given to a football team. And I will say my, I'll give you my, my sad message to you, that any gift that any of you give to any junior activity that has to do with high impact to the head or to the gut, to the youngsters, I'm opposed to, because I'm an R and retired, and you can't take that out of my system and my knowledge. And I believe there are so many other alternatives that you could usefully apply your valuable money to. Some are non-competitive, some are self-competitive, some activities could actually build some work skills in the youngsters, and I'm all for that. I'm just not going to be supportive of you if you give your money to anything that's going to occasion concussions, damage to these young bodies. And super-competitive activities are really not something that I support. So that is the only comment I want to give to you. There are lots and lots and lots of activities you can give this money to that really grow youngsters into wonderful adults. Let's choose those, and I'm sure you can find them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brett. I'll move approval of item 3.1. Second. Motion and a second. Please vote. Motion is unanimous. Item 3.11, Supervisor Ashley.
Item 3.11 is, we're going to revise the plans, specifications for Riverside Public Defender remodel and reject all bids, which we should. But all I want to say is that building is really badly needed, and I'm just saying, it's great. They should have rejected the bids, but let's really get with the program. We have to get this project going. This is badly needed. I move approval of 3.11.
Second. Motion and a second, item 3.11. Please vote. Motion is unanimous. Taking us to item 3.14. Gary Grant.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. With this particular agenda item, I requested you place this on the next month's data, because there is no additional data as stated on their application. And it says continued on the next page, and there's only a front page without any definition of how the expenditure is going on. So I request that that be a separate hearing.
Okay. Thank you, Gary. No further comments on item 3.14. Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Please vote. Motion is unanimous. Taking us to item 3.642. Gary, you're up again.
Well, Gary is coming up. I meant to comment on 344. I wanted to say that it's 344, the, the project is within the 5th district and it says 3rd district.
Okay.
Just for clarification. Still a project, but just for the, for the record.
Okay.
What number is this?
3.42.
3.42, yeah. This is a new library, and I got, that's the one that was more about by our redevelopment agency. And I think that my community was involved in the financial requirement of that RDA process. And this appears to be a cost burden that was never included in RDA for maintenance of these programs. And I'm just wondering if our cost is tied to that in the relationship to our taxation. It doesn't make a statement as to how this RDA library in Mead Valley particularly was created. And as this is my understanding, it was RDA. And with RDA, there is no maintenance fee and you're paying for maintenance of specifics on that area. And I'm wondering whether the cost is against us. And you do not make any statement related to that. This is referring back to RDA. And you encompassed more than just Mead Valley in that particular RDA for that library. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Gary. All right. No further comments on item 3.42. I'll move. Motion is unanimous. Item 3.52. Britt Holstrom.
Okay. This is the transportation issue on speed, right? Okay. I'm still not settled after all these lies. Okay, so I'm trying to concentrate here. I've spoken to a wonderful person in transportation. He called me up after the last meeting's topic on this. And we are going to be ongoing with our dialogue in terms of what's happening in Mead Valley and the speed. I am questioning the whole theoretical background on how the various speeds that are accepted within a community are handled. I live in an area, Conmeade Valley, which is between Kahaka and Nandina and the 215 and Wood. And at certain times in the day, morning and afternoon or evening mostly, we have people. have people, including our own, who are speeding like crazy through our very wanting streets, and it causes tremendous collisions and havoc. We wanted to slow it down many years ago, because we did not have enough sheriffs and CHP was never seen there in order to control the speed. So the transportation system very generously came out and put a lot of stop signs, thinking that they could slow down the traffic, okay? So we have all of these stop signs, but then we built schools and more development around there, and more people were coming down, speeding like crazy through our neighborhood. So the stop signs really were violated, and they didn't do much good. It's amazing how a person can stop at the stop line in a split second, get it up to sixty before the next stop sign. That's amazing, you know? I don't have the skill, nor do I want to, you know, practice it, but they do. So now, with future developmental plans for shopping center and things like that, we have to accommodate the traffic somehow, but we do not, as a community, want to have all these speed demons going through our neighborhood. And I liken it to, our crisis is like a family who has a deviant child or a deviant person to accommodate, okay? You got the person into your midst, and you sort of love them, but you're not quite sure, because they come into your neighborhood and absolutely, you know, are selfish to the max. They want their car to be visualized as a status symbol, they want to have all that testosterone, and I'm sorry to say, Astrid, and also, you know, going on to that speed pedal, and all kinds of motives evidently are going through this. We need to talk about this topic more. I know my time is up, and I don't want to be, you know, here too long. This is not something that we can just deal with right now. It has to do with the attitude of what a road is for, how a car should be used, and also the rights of everybody being able to use those roads safely. Thank you.
Stay up here, though, stay up here, thank you.
Constantly, thank you.
No, stay up, you're up next, Brett, please stay up here. I'm going to...
I actually thought he said say a prayer, and I'm praying all the time.
We already have one, but we can do another one.
There you go.
Move approval of item...
Fair as I'm good at, okay?
Move approval of item three point five two, appreciate your comments.
Yeah.
Wait, wait, hold on.
Okay.
Because I saw yours linked here on item three point five three, so I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna move for reconsideration of item three point five three. So move. And a second, motion, second to motion Supervisor Ashley, please. Motion is, let's re-vote again, please. Supervisor Menoy, Supervisor Ashley, please re-vote. Sorry. This is just on reconsideration.
Brett, that's reconsideration of three point five three?
Five three, yeah.
Have we voted on three point five two?
Yes, we did, we got it. Okay, we voted on three point five two. Now to three point five three, Brett.
Well, I was hoping you'd keep this one, because I want to give you a good word on that. I criticized you last time, sort of tongue-in-chief, but also with some sincerity that you didn't have time or you didn't look up the Riverside Hospice and its horrible history and present practice, but in this one, I can tell you that this one has a good history. You're talking about giving money to the Burn Institute, okay? And you're also talking about giving money to the Riverside Medical Clinic Foundation, which also does a lot of good work in our community, and I'm sure Salma Grant would be supporting you on this one too, because of her nursing background. We're all in support of that, and more of this should be taking place with your discretionary funds. So kudos to you all. This is gonna help our society and also set a pattern for who you can give the money to in future years. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brett. All right, motion on item three point five three, Supervisor Bestrow.
I'll move approval.
Second to motion, please. Motion is unanimous, taking us to items, items, we're gonna take both together, well, let's take item three point five nine, do you want to include three point six oh, does it make sense to go together, Jay?
Sure.
Okay. Take items three point five nine and three point six oh together, Mr. Executive Officer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Board members. Staff has been working very hard to return the budget for finalization to you today. Big thanks to Ed Corser, our CFO, for the yeoman's job, you always do great work, and I appreciate your efforts. Also, thank you to George for stepping in this summer and running the office while all that work is going on. Karen Johnson, Christopher Hans, Ivan Chan do a lot of work on the budget, and we appreciate that. I also want to thank all the department heads for the efforts you've done this year to achieve a balanced budget this year. We had a goal of a large fund balance of, I believe, forty million, and Ed will get into that, and I would think we've achieved that goal, nearly twenty million dollars in the other funds returned. Thank you very much to the sheriff for the job you've done in your budget, it's a very complex budget and very difficult to manage, and you've done a great job. I know the CFO will have comments on that, and I appreciate your, being a partner in this effort. Also to Paul Zalovak, our District Attorney, for the efforts that you've taken to come in on target and return funds, probation, the public defender. The criminal justice team has done a great job, and we appreciate that. I know FIRE is out there working hard on their budget, and it's a bit more problematic, but thank you also, Chief, for the efforts that you do. We've made great strides also in achieving cost savings this year. Kevin Crawford's come on board and is helping to return over three million dollars in cost savings in IT. We have greater expectations with the projects he's working on, Board members, that we can achieve probably another ten to twelve million dollars in coming efforts in IT reform, and I know there's gonna be a lot of work in that effort in the next year or two. So we're making great strides in delivering you a balanced budget. The caution is this, is that we have many more years of difficulties ahead of us, and we have to remember now that once we're balanced, anything we do as far as spending puts us out of balance. And so, Mr. Corser, do you have a presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Orr. My name's Ed Corser with the Executive Office, and this item is the final county budget for fiscal year twelve thirteen. Of course, we balance the budget every year, but balance this time means we've put up enough ongoing money to cover all ongoing expenses with no use of one-time money and no use of reserves. We haven't been able to say that for at least four years, so we're in a very good position at this point in time, and we have a lock on our destiny so long as we hold the line. There are difficulties, of course, as we move ahead, because three factors that I can think of, the state budget is still a mess, they will continue to look for money from counties. Revenue hopefully will be going up. The latest projections on property tax, which is eighty percent of our revenue, are that at least they won't go down again. But let's say they grow by two percent, which would be great for us. Two percent is about ten million dollars. That's nowhere near enough to deal with the budget issues we're facing, so we can't really look to revenue increases to solve our problem. And then, we already know we have some increasing costs over the next three years that we're gonna have to cover, and departments are already working on how to deal with that. But despite those three issues, we've managed to get to a balanced budget, a structurally balanced budget at this point in time, so let's savor the moment, and let's hold the line as we go forward. The goal that you have and that we have all along has been to maintain adequate service levels for the public despite this free fall in revenue, and we've tried to approach it several ways over the last four years, and now we've gotten to the point where we have that structurally balanced budget. But looking forward, we need to know that as we look at the year twelve thirteen, and we begin to play for, we begin to plan for that now, we need to look at how we're gonna deal with those issues that come up in the future. So we have a brief PowerPoint here. If I can make it work right. Okay, so this is to show you where we were in June. Remember, we passed a budget that essentially was balanced, but it had some problems with it. We didn't know about our year-end fund balance. We were assuming twice the normal year-end fund balance, instead of twenty, we were assuming forty million dollars, because we, over the last ten years, except for one, we've gotten forty million dollars. So we assumed we'd have that as ongoing money, but in June, we didn't know that for sure, so we plugged it in at forty. The property tax final roll was not finished yet, and we were worried that it was gonna drop up to two percent, and so we were looking at possibly another ten million dollar shortfall, but we didn't want to build that into the budget right away and face the consequences of having more layoffs than we needed. And then, in order to balance the budget, we essentially reduced our contingency, which is used for issues that come up over time. We may have to have borrowed money, I believe this last year, because we had a litigation issue, we had to come up with six million dollars all of a sudden. It's sitting there for issues that come up during the year. It's normally at twenty million, we lowered that to seven with the promise we would raise it back to twenty for the final budget. So that's where we were in June, and since that time, we knew we had to cut, we had to cut at least thirteen million dollars because we wanted to replace the contingency money, and as the final property tax roll came through, the reduction was much less, it was only a million dollars, but the total was fourteen million dollars we had to find through some sort of budget-cutting effort. And unlike over the years where we've said, well, cut public safety a certain percentage across the board, and everybody a certain percentage across the board, we thought we should focus on what are the most logical ways to cut this budget, at least in our mind. Not everybody agrees with where we want, but this is where we want, fourteen million dollars, and I have the detail, I'll show you in a second, but much of it came from either revenue replacements or revenue enhancements. We also had certain savings, both in terms of administrative and workload, and then there are operating reductions. There were two clear operating reductions, one million dollars for code enforcement and one million dollars for public defender, and I'll show you the sheet that indicates where we are. First of all, let me, though, show you where we saved our money, because when we got our forty million dollars, which we did, it's probably gonna be around forty-two, but we haven't got a final closure on, but it's cutting it close, you can see that, so we have to beware of doing this next year. But half of that probably came because the contingency already had at least twenty million dollars in it, so we were able to use that money as part of fund balance, and the other half came from departments that returned money in fund balance that they saved during the year, and here's a list of who they were. As Mr. Orr indicated, the sheriff returned nearly seven million dollars, for which we're very grateful, because without that, we wouldn't have got our extra twenty in order to balance the budget. So this is fund balance in part derived because of money returned by departments at the end of the fiscal year, and that's a very, very important factor. We're never really sure of how that's gonna work. Now, we know that the Board has approved additional patrol officers for the unincorporated area. There was not money put up at the time that took place, so we do have the issue of the sheriff ready to ramp up for patrol, but we've taken this fund balance and we've used it to balance the budget, and I'll talk about that in a second, but since it's been mentioned, I want to at least bring that up upfront. This money was needed in order to balance the budget. Can I make this? We're pretty high-tech here. Okay, the bottom line is, we've got our fourteen million. That should add up to fourteen. That's what, here's what we did. The revenue replacements and enhancements, probation has additional state revenue, this is not AV one oh nine money, this is other state revenue that we were able to use to balance. We have additional redevelopment pass-through money from Reno Valley that we can use. Now, that's another item, by the way, when I talk about the state, and the state is aware that we have this pass-through money, that we get to keep one hundred percent, and I think they might have, some of them might have planned that this money was all gonna turn into property tax, of which we only get twelve percent. That still could happen in the future, and that amounts to a lot of money for our budget. So we need to be very careful about where the state goes with the next effort they make at trying to take county revenue. That could switch from one hundred percent of nearly eighty million dollars to twelve percent of eighty million dollars. So that's a risk, but at any rate, we have that money that we can use, that's ongoing money. Court fees for public defender service, that's the next item on this agenda. This is a state-allowed charge to people who need a public defender, fifty dollars, that if they can't afford it, then they don't have to pay it. If they can, they will be asked to pay that. The County of Los Angeles has done this for a long time. It's allowed by the state, the courts support it, they made the estimate for a million dollars, not us, and there are some wrinkles as far as implementation, it takes time when you establish a new fee, but it's very clear that this is something that we should be doing. Supervisor Stone would have been here advancing this issue today, but he wasn't able to make it. Nevertheless, he supports it. The point we need to make, and the point we have heard, is that, well, we may not get that million dollars, at least we may not get it the first year, but you know what? We, I told Mr. Wyndham myself, we will back him up. If that million doesn't come in at revenue, that's for us to make up, so it's not gonna be a loss to his department.
Mr. Chair, the courts of the Public Defender's Office, those that are experienced with this kind of charge and how it's been done, feel that they can net a, net a certain surplus above the cost of collections on this?
A surplus?
Yeah, they can, they, they can, in effect, the...
This would be a fee that the state allows.
The fee is gonna generate more than the cost of collecting...
Well, it would, yes.
Administering and collecting the fee.
Right, right. So, but that's a million dollars. We will certainly make that up if it doesn't come in. DPSS has additional realignment money, and the DPDES cost is being shifted from general fund over to the Road Department. Thanks to our new Executive Officer, George, he's managed to come up with that for us. On reductions in costs based on workload and administrative savings, we have less in the way of debt service costs, both administrative and principal and interest costs on our debt. Public defender capital cases, there was a unit established specifically for that purpose several years ago, the caseload is roughly half of what it used to be, we don't know what's gonna happen with the ballot initiative that's coming up in November, but the caseload is down sufficiently that we feel we can save money there. Court-related expenditures, we deal with the courts every year, they help us decide what we owe them, the state requires we pay them what they need, and we will, but they have allowed us to reduce our payment to that next year. We have social services caseload, you never know what it's really gonna be, but we've made an estimate that allows us to save five hundred thousand dollars. That could turn around, we've always told Susan Low that we will pay whatever the caseload demands, so we backstopped that. The registrar of voters has a couple of warehouse people that Carrie Virgil said she doesn't really need for warehousing all year long, she's gonna use some of her temporary help to handle that warehousing need once a year. That was a nice surprise, because everybody knows we're not gonna touch ROB unless, you know, they're willing to go along with us, so I was pleased to hear about her cooperation, and we've gotten that from, from most of these managers too. They all realize where we are, where we're going, what we have to do to get through this next several years. And then the operating budget reductions, code enforcement, when we went through the first cut for the June budget, and we took a percentage across the board for everybody, we looked at what we had on there, and we decided that there are certain things we didn't want to cut completely at that time. One of them was code enforcement for nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, so in the June budget, we did not make that cut, but now we have to get to fourteen. Either we cut there or we cut someplace else, and I'll show you in a little bit what our choices are. I think you hear from Juan Perez, it's never an easy thing to take a cut, he thinks he can manage it. I think we discussed the need that he discussed with each of you what your priorities are so far as code enforcement, so we focus on the real needs for each of you by district. The last one is public defender for one million dollars, essentially, we're bringing his cut up for the current year to about where sheriff and DA... DA are as far as the last two years of cuts. So in that case, and, and we, we did discuss with supervisor Stone, since we knew he would be unable to be here, what these were. He, of course, is concerned with these operating budget reductions, but recognizes the need to deal with the budget. And the fact is, if you need a public defender, you're going to get one, whether it be with the public defender staff or with contract help. So that's where we came up with our money for these cuts and we thought it was a lot better. We still do think it's a lot better than just taking across-the-board cuts as we go Others, by the way, that we left out when we did that across-the-board cut included animal control for $1,500,000, homeless 589, we did not cut the homeless budget, DPSS administration because you run into issues if you go too far with cuts there, Office on Aging, Ad Commission, those, those sorts of things. So if I can get back to my PowerPoint here. This is kind of a box score of where we are on the budget now. County budget, countywide, it's still 4.7 billion. No change there, just because differences are caught up in the rounding, so that's not an issue. The discretionary budget is down 14 million. As I mentioned, we were 13 million short, plus a million loss in property taxes. Reserves are still the same. We haven't touched reserves. It's $140 million. The contingency is brought back up from 7 million to 20 million. And then authorized positions, just to look at that, I wanted to bring it up and mention it, the final budget actually adds 224 positions to the final budget, but none of those jobs are net county cost or discretionary revenue funded. If I could get my list out here, 90% of them are, well, most of them are for DPSS, which provides Susan with the flexibility that she needs to hire up when they get new grant money. They are going to be getting some new programs. So it's a matter of just flexibility for handling that. Also, public health and mental health, grant-related money or in public health's case, the fact that we've essentially dismantled the old CHA organization, so these positions are just moving. It's not really additional positions. So I wanted to emphasize that because when 224 shows up, people wonder why are we adding budget money for these and we're not. The bottom line is to show you the filled positions, the fact that we've dropped over 1,000 jobs over the last four years. Actually, if you look at it one way, it's more like 1,500, but then we added back 500 for hospital, DPSS and other agencies that are not discretionary funded. So we've done a pretty good job, I think, of cutting. We have to remember that although we've taken a 25% hit on our discretionary revenue from 800 million to 600 million, you don't look and say, why didn't we take 25% of the positions? Because most of them are funded by other money, so we need to recognize that. I think another thing you're going to see is why are so many authorized positions versus the filled positions? Well, the reason for that is that departments like DPSS want to have and do have additional authorized jobs in case they have a need to fill a job quickly or in case they have a new grant come about. Sheriff has additional authorized positions too that are not filled. That gave him the flexibility so that in June, when you said, okay, you can go ahead and staff up for additional patrol, he could just go ahead and do it because he already had the authorized position. So it provides additional flexibility. Some of the other differences though, and probably the main reason for these big differences in numbers is they don't include, that is, the filled positions do not include part-time, seasonal, hourly, those kinds of jobs that don't count. So that's why the difference between those numbers. Over the last three years, we've laid off 263 individuals, unfortunately. As we look at layoffs, we never, at this point, look to, well, what's the, what's the body count in terms of layoffs? We, when we, we do have to reduce the number of positions, both now and going forward. I'm sure you recognize that. But we have at least 600 or 700 people every year just resigned. They don't take a retirement, they just leave the county. So if we start holding those positions vacant more, that will help. And as time goes by, we'll see how many we actually lose, but we will have to drop positions. Okay, so as far as next year, I'm, I'm, I'm jumping into where we go from here. We're balanced structurally, we're in recovery, let's keep it that way. That's, and, and my point would be this, let's talk about the sheriff, for instance, and patrol. We've already approved the addition of patrol, that's fine. As we go forward, and I'm sure the sheriff would tell you this, we're not exactly sure how much we'll need to pay for that added staffing because you bring on a school of 30, 40 individuals, they're going to drop by half during the time they're in school. So, you know, that, that back and forth makes it somewhat indistinct in terms of how much we'll actually need, but the sheriff will be able to size that up over the next few months. I would not advocate that you add one dime to this budget at this point in time because we have the structural balance. Let these managers work with the numbers they've got for their budget. In November, we're going to come back and tell you what we've got in the way of a sound position for departments for the rest of the year and where the shortfalls are. Fire, for instance, the chief, and I think Diane Sinclair's here, if you need to talk with her, he had a $10 million shortfall in this budget. He came up with, when I last spoke to him, something like 5 million that he, he can implement to save half of that 10 million shortfall. If he can find more, great, let's give him half the year to figure it out. If he can't, and we say at the end of November or whenever in November, he's going to come up short by $5 million, I would advocate that at that point in time, we don't kick this thing down to next year's budget. We say, this is an ongoing cost, it has to be dealt with now, let's cut the other departments to make up for that $5 million. And the reason I say that is because in the following years, these departments are going to have to absorb some significant cost increases. So I want to keep the ledger clean all the way up until next year. They're already planning on how to absorb those added costs. Let's not go adding new costs to them late in the game. Let's deal with it as the time comes. So that's, that's my opinion. I, I'm hoping Mr. Orr agrees, I think we, we agree. And I'm hoping that the sheriff agrees with this. We, we will provide the funding for him to get through to pay for the additional patrol that you have authorized, there's no question about that. How much it will be, I'm not sure, but we do need to make those cuts. When the time comes, we make those cuts. I would say that would be at least by mid-year, we make those cuts. So now to get on to how do we make those cuts, this is the big picture. This is how much discretionary revenue we've got. The red is public safety. It includes not only sheriff, DA, public defender and FIRE and probation, but we've also put inmate health and mental health care. You know, we've had some issues on that, so we just put that in as public safety. That's not to say, this is your priority number one, this picture right here. That's not to say they don't take cuts. They have taken cuts. The sheriff has mentioned before, you make a cut this year, it rolls over to the next year. That's called a de facto cut. We add more cuts. He's taken this and so have the DA and they've actually returned money this year. So these departments, although their priority one, have taken cuts, they have lived with them, they manage them, and I call them good team players. That's how we get through this because they have the bulk of the money. It's very important. The next category is called restricted, that's 23%. Okay, most of that is either debt service, can't, can't skip on that, court costs. The courts have given us some money back, but they still want their ongoing 30 million and we will provide it. There is certain DPSS costs that have to be matched. When they give us money, we have an MOU to provide certain matching money, that's in there. And the last is our $20 million contingency. We're not going to touch that either. So that's 80% of this number. So even though it's restricted, it's not public safety, but it is, you know, we better watch out about touching that. The last category is essentially what's left. That's what's left for us to cut from, recognizing you can still cut into public safety in different areas. You just have to set your priorities as to where, where we would do that. But if you, if you leave that out and you leave out the restricted and you go to the most subject to reduction, this is a big chunk of numbers, but just let me tell you what it is. It's the same 76 million that's on the prior page, the 12%. We've divided it into central core, support services, the board, our office, the, the three other electeds, the assessor, treasurer, tax collector, and who am I missing? The auditor controller. They, they are all on here. The, the first column of numbers is their NCC in fiscal year 1213. That's where your budget is right now. The next two columns, look at the bottom, it's 10 million and 5 million. If we have to find $5 million and we were to just cut across the board, that's how much we would cut, each of these departments that are showing here. Now look down at the core activities, public health, DPSS administration. I told you, that's a problem because if we are not able to keep up with the workload and do things on a timely basis, we're subject to sanctions. So that's, you've got to be careful about that. Code enforcement, we've already been cutting code enforcement. Animal control services, I said we tried to save them money in the budget, we did so far, but you can see where the cuts have to come now if we start adding money. And we need to recognize that this is not necessarily where it's going to go, you can decide someplace else, but this is based on that pie chart, this is the area where we would cut. If you added $5 million today and we'd have to come up with a quick answer, it would probably be that right-hand column there, which, you know, certainly affects us too, so.